Good evening and thank all of you for being here tonight. Today is July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Our thoughtful today is many of life failures are people who did not realize how close they were to success. When they gave up, that's Thomas A. Edison. Again, thank all of you for being here tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Cowan if he would lead us in our pledge and I might ask Commissioner Mason, I mean Commissioner Cowan if he would lead us in our prayer tonight. And Commissioner Mason if he would lead us in our pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you dear Lord for your blessings of life, Lord, and we thank you dear God for, for health, Lord, and, oh, we thank you for the grace and mercy that you've given us. And Lord, we pray for wisdom, we pray that, Lord, that we do the right things for our county. We pray, God, that you continue to watch over Newton County and to continue to bless it. We thank you for all things you've done here, we think every, we ask it all in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Commissioners, there's one addition that I need to make. Viewpoint Health is asking us to reappoint Brandy Birch from Newton County Sheriff's Office and Keith Ellis to their board. Wanna make that on the Cosina agenda item eight G. That's Brandy Birch from Newton County Sheriff's Office and Keith Ellis to back to their board of directors. Do we? Wanna make it I, I'm sorry, eight I. Eight I, that's Brandy Birch and William Keith Ellis. With that, Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
Commissioner, I mean Chairman Baines, item number eight D, if we can move that out for discussion, only reason being is because it's the first time discussing it. And it's an increment of increase of amount of money that's being, the taxpayers are paying. So I just wanted to hear in regards to that and also wanted to make it aware and more transparent to the taxpayers that we're paying these incremental amounts for five years.
Which one now?
That is eight D. That's D, IT requests an approval of DASN Corp. contract for email cloud solution. And it has a cost from year one all the way to year five. It doesn't say renewal, so that's why I knew it had to be a new item.
So I wanna remind the Commissioners, you know, things under the Cosina agenda, Cosina agenda are budgeted items. I'm gonna remove it, I'll remove it this time. I'll make that nine. Well, no, we got a nine. That's how the citizen comments.
Just make citizen comment nine B.
We'll make that nine, and then we're gonna move citizen comments down to nine B, nine A. Nine A. With those changes, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This opportunity we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only, agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Yeah. That's what I do.
He renumbered it.
Yeah. No, yeah, it's gonna be nine A.
You're gonna do nine, then nine A. Nine will be the new item, nine A will be citizen comments.
So we do the new item first?
Yes. Yeah. We're gonna do the agenda first and then as well we do go to citizen's comments. Yeah. Thank you, no comments. Chairman report, I don't have thing, anything to report tonight. I do wanna wish my daughter, to me, a happy twenty-first birthday. Yeah, I don't know if she's here yet, but she was supposed to come tonight. Next, County Manager Report, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, citizens of the community, I come before you today with the County Manager's Report. We're gonna stay consistent with the three P approach and today we're gonna focus on people and in terms of the people, the people of this community, Newton County. Nelson Heights Community Center is a pillar in the community, so we wanna talk a little bit about some of the events that have taken place in recent times there. In the spirit of working together in unity, solidarity, and togetherness, we partnered with the Newton County Board of Education. And in particular, their nutrition program and continued the Seamless Summer Option Food Program. And not only was this program done at Nelson Heights, it was done at two other facilities that are owned by Newton County. And those facilities were Washington Street and also Denny Dobbs. Next year, we're looking to add a fourth site, and that's Beaver Park in Mansfield, to reach more children with this initiative. When you look at the numbers of meals during this process, four hundred and twenty youth were served at Washington Street, five hundred and sixty-five youth were served at Nelson Heights. And one thousand two hundred and one youth were served at Denny Dobbs. So when you look at that as a collective, two thousand one hundred and eighty-six young people received lunches through this program. And then if we add the park that was in Port Adele, B.C. Crowell, that was another one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine children that were fed. So in total, three thousand three hundred and twenty-five young people in the Newton County communities participated in this lunch drive. And I wanna thank their parents and I wanna thank these respected community centers and parks for participating in it. In addition to the Seamless Summer Lunch Program, we also did a Nelson Heights Open House and Expo. Here, we just wanted to reach the community and it took place on June twenty-seventh, and we had about a hundred community members participate in it. I wanna give a huge thank you to our constitutional and elected officials who participated in it. Here are some photos where Sheriff Brown participated in it. Also, the City of Covington Mayor, Mayor Baggett and Councilwoman Johnson participated in it. And I wanna give a huge thank you to Commissioner Henderson for showing up and being a part of it as well. It meant a lot to me to have an opportunity to talk to him about a community that he cares about deeply. In addition to the elected officials and the community partners that we'll bring up in just a moment, I have to give another huge shout out to our departments. We're a lean organization, but we do big and bold things. So I wanna give a special thanks to our Human Resources Department, our Parks and Rec Department, our Facility Maintenance Department, our Public Information Office, the Chairman's Office, and my staff for participating in this event. Another huge thank you to Newton County Fire Services. In particular, Fire Educator, Mr. James Franklin, he provided enrichment and education opportunities for the youth during this event. I wanna thank Chief Turner as well for allowing Fire Station One to be a full participant in it also. When we talk about working in collaboration and how it's important from a community aspect, again, the City of Covington participated. Georgia Extension Services and in particular Newton County Four H Program, Charlene Scott, she facilitated a chemical experiment with the youth. So that we can reach and touch as many people as possible in the community to let them know that resources are readily available to them. In reference to the community partners, Giving Hands Food Pantry gave out a lot of fruit that day to residents of the community. Newton County Family Connection, the Taylor Maye Foundation, Resilient Women, Georgia Piedmont Technical College, Willing Helpers Medical Free Clinic was doing free screenings there. The Newton Education Foundation and the Newton County, as I stated earlier, Education Nutrition Department. Working together works. When we move in unity, solidarity, and togetherness as a county, we can accomplish great things. This concludes my County Manager's Report.
Thank you, sir. Next is the Cosina agenda. Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve it, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Next is item nine. We should remove eight D and made it item nine. I'm assuming Commissioner Sanders has some questions about that?
Well, not so questions, I just wanted to hear his presentation, I know he was prepared. And want to hear what the amounts entail.
Good evening, Sir.
Commissioners, County Manager. So I come before you today to approve this, it went out for a bid already for an RFP. This is for email cloud solution to increase what we already have to an enterprise level, to increase our security, among other things. And that's primarily what it's for, it's a five-year contract. And it's laid out on the agenda item. Do you have any other questions?
So for the- Thank you, sir, any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
So the five-year contract, I see there's increments of fees that increase, so I just want you to expound on that, cuz the first year is eighteen, the second year is ninety-five. I think it's on the screen, people can see it. So can you expound on why it increased or is that a total payment that's been paid?
So the first year, we got a significant break on the first year. We, they waived the licensing costs for that first year. That's why you see the significant increase in year two and then the slight in year three and four and five. And that accounts for the yearly increase after the year two. So year one was the primary, primary, primary year that we, they waived the licensing costs. And then they increased in year two and three, four, five.
So there's not a set rate of how much it costs, it just basically just increased over the years? Is the storage being increased over the years or it's just a set storage rate?
The storage is set, it's unlimited, we have unlimited, once we go with-
So after the, what happens after the five years?
We'll have to reevaluate our email solution at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Seek a motion, please, I'm sorry, Commissioner Edwards, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we went through the normal purchasing process in selecting this vendor, correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is citizens comments. This opportunity we allow citizens to make comments, you have three minutes to do so. You can come up now, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm a resident of Fairview Quarter in District Three.
What's your name, please?
Sorry?
What's your name, please?
Maya. I wanted to respond or have a question regarding Mr. Cooper's addition for the summer program. Previously, Fairview Quarter was included, and I did, I've noticed they weren't a part of your inclusion for next year, and I wondered why. Because we have children over there that have had it up until this year.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please, you have three minutes to do so.
My name is Louis Williams, how y'all doing? And my address is forty Beaver Court, Covington, Georgia. I was here once before and as I was looking at-
Hold on one second, sir. Ma'am, can you please? Alright, thank you, go ahead, sir.
As I was saying, I was here before and I mentioned at that time about the, I guess, the tiny house situation or cottages or whatever you wanna call them. To see if there was anything that could be done in that area, seems like that's an issue. So my question is, what about the changing the minimum square footage of a home that can be built in the county? Since it's eighteen hundred square feet, maybe you can reduce the amount of the square footage of the home so that perhaps people can build their own home. They make it affordable for themselves. Times are changing, so it seems like this is not changing with it. You know, you got a lot of people wanna do things on their own, but they're kinda tied up, you know? You say gotta have eighteen hundred square feet of heated space. Not necessary for everybody, some people can do it with seven hundred square feet, nine hundred square feet. So maybe, you know, just look at doing some options like that, you know, so that, and they can still follow the same rules that the city or the county has. Nothing has to change but the minimum square feet. And another thing, it's like you senior citizens, you got these senior fifty-five and up communities that go up on your rent every, every, every year. Eventually, about four or five years, a lot of them gonna be tossed out, they ain't got nowhere to go. Because they can't afford to stay in that fifty-five and up community because they, they up the rent every year. I just left one. So hopefully, you know, I don't know how to go about getting this done as far as changing the square feet, but maybe that's something y'all can take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Ms. Cabion. I live in Settlers Grove. I, I, I just come to reiterate what we had talked about the last time I was here as far as the seniors program. And I just wanna know if anybody has discussed, looked into, or tried to put something in place for the seniors to be protected when the programs come in against the contractors. The contractors that don't do a good job or don't complete a job and we have to complain to you all. You all don't have no idea, but I asked last time if there's anything that could be put in place to protect the seniors. Because half of them don't know what needs to be done or how it's supposed to be done. And then they get left undone, then later on they discover, okay, well, it wasn't done right now, it's been months or whatever, so. I just would like to know if anyone has did this, you know, put it in place or discussed it or put it on the agenda or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Guys, if you could, could you please silence your phones so that people up here who's talking can get an opportunity to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Howard Greaves, another fifty-five rubber show court, Covington, Georgia. I wanna talk about the recent events, what I saw on television. About the chairman and the newly elected Lindsay. I believe you guys need to step aside till this is resolved. And I believe the board have the power to do so if you guys would wanna do the right thing for Newton County. Now, I'm not saying that he's guilty for what happened, but I don't think that he need to be in, running anything around here till this is resolved. I thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Paul Revere Jackson on the Threat Nation News. First of all, I want to tell Mr. Bane that I think you should step aside also, you and Ms. Lindsay, y'all, until this is resolved, y'all should step aside. The Commissioner, y'all have a right to vote this chair out, replacing with a temporary interim chair until we can get an election going. And still upset about my ARPA fund money that was stolen from the taxpayer, that should be investigated. And what else I wanna talk about? I don't understand how the people of Newton County could deal with this kind of corruption within this county. You was warned, Newton County, about the corruption in this county, but yet still, it fell on deaf ear and you decided to keep these people in office. Well, it's gonna cost us some kind of way. So if the Commissioner will do their job by holding this man accountable and replacing him out of that seat until this investigation can be over with, thank you.
Thank you, sir, anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, Sir.
Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two, in the Spring Hill community. He may, I was fortunate today to make a trip out to the Spring Hill Park. In fact, I made two trips out there. Went out, talked with Jeff for a while and talked with the park manager and he was telling me that, hey, we about finished. And all the grass is growing, there's water sprinklers, there's sprinkling, and everything is all paved. And I wanna thank this board for seeing that this, this project is, was, you know, taking care of. Only one thing, I didn't see a sign saying Spring Hill Park. So I talked with Mr. Cowan earlier and wanna make sure we put that sign up that says two words, Spring Hill. Not, not just one word, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, sir, anyone else? Good evening, good evening.
Hey, Mason, how you doing? Good, Mr. Bane, how you doing?
State your name, state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Tracy.
There you go.
I live down the street from you again.
Good.
Okay. Now, I'm coming to see if there's any money to help my father because he has dementia. I sent y'all pictures of how I have to keep him in the house, I don't think it's right. No, I don't. So y'all gonna help me? Y'all gonna help my dad? Mr. Bane?
Go ahead, you got three minutes, ma'am.
I'm asking you, are you gonna help my dad? My dad has dementia, I see what money y'all got, I see what's on the news, but you said it wasn't no more money. You said it was no more money. Mason, you said the same thing, Cooper, you said the same thing. You said it was no more money, but-
Ma'am, can you, can you address the chair?
I'm addressing you, I'm addressing every, everybody that was, that I, that I notified, I'm addressing. I asked for help for my father, my mom died, she's gone. So help my daddy, you helped yourself. You helped yourself, so why not help my daddy? My daddy is seventy-five years old. I'm, I, I still got the first, I still got the first application. When you lied and said it was over, fifty-three thousand. No, it's not, not my daddy's income, not ours income, no, it's not, come on now, don't do that. And you remember what I told you? God told me not to mess with you, told me not to mess with you.
There you go.
And I did not mess with you that night, I asked you about that statute, you brushed me off. You brushed me off, yes, you did. God told me not to mess with you and look what God exposed you. Look what God did to you. That's right, that's right, you're wrong. And I'm helping to tell every last one of you, other than y'all, from you to this side, you're straight wrong. And you're day climbing, you already had to turn yourself in, it ain't over yet, babe. Y'all helping good.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
My name is Valicia Usher. I've been listening to a lot of people out there and I think the saying goes, you're innocent until proven guilty. And ain't nobody up there been convicted, nobody. And it's a lot of people out there done been to jail, done been locked up, been convicted and still in here wanna press, say what he meant, Marcela Bane done did, Mr. Bane done done. But he ain't been convicted. He ain't, he ain't been charged, he ain't been convicted, and then all this Facebook stuff and all this other stuff. I mean, do you believe everything you see on the news? Do you believe everything you read on Facebook? It's a lot of people up here that just ain't been exposed. It's a lot of people out there that just ain't been exposed. So until you see something that says this man been proven guilty, he's not. He ain't even been convicted. So y'all can believe what y'all want to, y'all can say what y'all want to, cuz everything to me is rumors, 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 rumors. And I, and, and God has asked all of us to make mistakes. And I, and, and God has asked all of us to make mistakes. Ain't nobody perfect. Nobody. But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get off of that stuff, because it, it's a, it's, to me, it's a, it's a topic that shouldn't be discussed until somebody is found guilty. But what I'm here to say is, people with disability, they need help too. They need housing, they need somewhere to live. I mean, yeah, they get social security, but that social security is not enough to even do anything. My son is disability. And what he get? He can't afford nothing. No rent, no nothing. If it weren't for me, he wouldn't, I don't know how he survived from day one to day two. But, you know, I'm just trying to figure out a way to help that, people with disability, mental illness. So until, you know, I, I, that's why I don't worry about all this Facebook and all this and that and feeding into it, because I got other issues in my life. So people, everybody in here need to get right with God and pray about this, and understand that everybody make mistake, and ain't nobody perfect.
Anyone else?
My name is Denise Williams, I'm a Newton County resident. And what I want to address the board is, that it's true, you're innocent until you're proven guilty. But I want to know if this board is gonna make a decision to not let Marcela Baines handle that P card. Because with these type of charges, he should not be in possession of our county P card. Because those are our Newton County taxpayers' tax dollars. So that is a question that I want to ask the board, because the board does, and matter of fact, the county manager, you over day-to-day operation. So y'all can make that decision to remove that P card out of, out of the possession of Chairman Baines. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? I asked the county attorney, he, he said he can, so.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Fay Salmon, I'm from 668 Kirkland Road, where that roundabout is being built. It is a nightmare for me. My physical address, 668 Kirkland Road, that, the driveway was completely blocked for two months. Completely blocked. We had to drive around in the daycare to go into my house. My grass is burnt out. This is so annoying to me that I can't even, my grass is burnt out, the landscaper can't get in the driveway now. Commissioner Sanders wrote a letter over the weekend, everyone came running yesterday. Chester never came. Mr. Cooper always is going to return my calls, I don't get a call. This is not acceptable. Today, they decided, oh, they're going to dig and make a driveway. It's slanted, there's just no way I can drive up and down that driveway. This is unacceptable. I pay taxes, I've lost business because of that roundabout. The, the drivers won't go in there because they're afraid they're going to break down, and it's been a nightmare. The seniors need the care, I suffice the care, but right now, it's like zero. And this is so unfair. Because nobody, on Brown Bridge where they're doing that bridge, no, no, not, not one of those drivers was blocked. I mean, when I tell you it was completely blocked, if I had to call an ambulance, they would never have gotten into my, they have to drive around. And they said my husband gave them permission to, not true. Not true. This is not acceptable. And I think it's very unfair, because you would not accept it at your house.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name is Madagala, I'm with the Nelson High Community Center. And I have a question that I would like to ask. I want to use the center, but I was told that I wasn't able to use it. It only meant for the county to come in and, come out there and use it. They said it was not fit for the public to use it, but it's fit enough for you all to use it. And I don't think that it's fair. If it's good enough for you to use it, why can't we use it? You got our tax dollars paying for you to use it, but we can't use it. Why is that? I mean, you don't want to answer my question? You don't want to call back to give me an answer? I call you? But you never return a call. I know you heard. She's not here, but I know you heard. But I want to use the center, this commissary, they told me that I couldn't use it because the fire marshal said that it was not inspected. I knew it was inspected, because I was there when the fire marshal was there, inspecting it. And I asked him, point blank, is the building okay? He said, yes, it's up to code. So if it's up to code, why can't we use it? You used it for four weeks for the kids to come in there and eat for two hours. But you can come out there and stay out there all day with your program. I see your program, I was in your program. I enjoyed your program. But I didn't enjoy that the kids didn't really have nowhere to go. And they still don't have nowhere to go. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Good evening.
My name is Misty Glor. I live at 160 East Door Hollow Lane. I will not keep my mouth shut about the stuff I know in this county anymore. I reported everything I know to the FBI. There are people in this county that tried to kill three of my kids, and I have the proof. They live in your house, Mr. Edwards? Does Paul Daley still live in your house?
Ma'am, address the-
It's registered to your name.
Address the chairman, please.
I will, I'll address you too.
Thank you.
I found your LLC is on my Dropbox as well.
Thank you.
I will report everything I know. I was born at Rockdale County Hospital. I was brought home to Anderson Circle. I ran these drug routes. I didn't sell drugs, I didn't run drugs, but I know where they are. I know where the drug houses are. I know the drugs that are being trafficked through this place. My mom and dad retired for the city. I know people retired here, I know other people that are willing to speak. I will not keep my mouth shut until charges are filed against the people who tried to kill my kids, and tried to cover it up with the paperwork that I have. It was tried to be covered with the county paperwork. And I have all the proof. And it has been online for over two years. There's information hidden in your courthouses that is not online, that cannot be accessed by the FBI. Anything public, I went and got, and gave it to them. Everything was legal. I'm going to every courthouse I can in these counties and pulling people's property information. Until charges are filed about my kids being killed and the people who did it, and tried to cover it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Archie Shepherd, Heatherheart Street, Covetown, Georgia. I just want to say to the people that got up here tonight and said that you're innocent to prove a guilty. If, if they don't know the law, they got enough law that he's not gonna get out of these charges, he gonna be found guilty. We've been saying all the time, all this corruption going on, we heard in the county, but nobody believe it. But this is just a tip of the iceberg.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
My name is Charlene Bridges, and I represent Saddle Brook. I want to talk about the, I know it's already been-
Guys, listen. Y'all please give her respect while she's up here talking, please. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
And I know there's the, the, right across from Newton County High School, traffic. Right now, it's building up. What I have to say, our worlds will change in the next three weeks. School will be back in session. Right now, Salem Road, Brown Bridge Road, right now, I can't even get down it right now. The exit I use right now is Exit 84. Exit 84 is gonna be all this new building right here. Okay? Exit 84 has the apartment complex on the access. You go behind the Jeep dealership, there's another set of homes already set. What really gets me now is on the, on the Conyers side, we have the homes that are being built right there on Salem Road. So I already have traffic already now, almost thirty minutes to a half hour. There are already about twenty homes in right now at the sale gas station. I don't know where we gonna go. I, I, I have no idea. This is a health and safety crisis. Whoever has to answer to the thousands of women, men, children that are gonna be at risk. Are you willing to sacrifice that? Can we take a turn for everyone, not just the west side of Newton County? To make a change? Either buy this, change it, have them, halt them for a little while, until we can get the ordinances changed? And all these check boxes that these builders can go and take two or three checks? Where's the check for humanity? It's too easy to build here. That builder told us it's gonna be urban professionals with roommates that will have this. He said he has his vision of this. I have my real vision of this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yes, we all have an opinion. And it's no one here could say whose opinion is right and who's wrong until Chairman Baines be convicted of what he has done. And I feel like my opinion could matter just like anybody else. And I'm up here to say, I don't, until, again, I believe in, until you are proven guilty, we have no say so. And you could, anybody else could think what they want to think, but that's my opinion. And I don't see where it's such a big deal that we have to, y'all want to vote him out tonight, while you can't wait to see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone? Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I'd like to commend several organizations within the county. And I'm, I'll leave one out, I'm sure, is our, our Fire Department, our Water and Sew Authority, E911, and Newton County Water. I believe I read on the website this morning, or yesterday morning, where our ISO rating has numerically it decreased, but it means it increased in the, in terms of the fire safety for the county, which is good news for your insurance, homeowners' insurance premiums, in the long run. How that's implemented and, and digested and, and sent out into the community, I don't know yet. But I'm, I'm trying to get, I'll get some answers from maybe our Fire Department and post that on the website page. But congratulations to those organizations, that's a significant accomplishment in terms of safety for our county, and both both safety for our county and, and our pocketbooks of our citizens. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much. Just to echo what one of the residents stated, we do need to go into a building moratorium, my colleagues, to actually look at all of our ordinances. I know Shayna said that we did hire consultants, which we did vote for, but it's gonna take almost a year or so before it even gets back to us. She said about ten plus months before it even gets back to us. That came from Shayna. And so, we need to go into a building moratorium to make sure that we have everything in place. As you know, I did appeal that development that she actually is speaking of, and that development is gonna bring two hundred and sixteen rentals directly, not across the street from Newton High. Directly in front of Newton High. Newton High School is already at capacity. Fairview Elementary is two students away for capacity. Clements Middle School is five students away from capacity. So we do need to go into a moratorium. And not only, I'm just talking about the west side. The, the east side is also at capacity with the school system as well. I got those numbers directly from Newton County School System. So we do need to go into a building moratorium till we get everything in place. I'm honored to be asked to present at the National Association of Counties Conference, which is coming up this week, in their youth summit, investing in the future of our youth. So I'll be one of the speakers, actually speaking on providing resources for our youth, I'm honored to do that. Also, on August 24th, I partnered with the, the Department of Community Affairs, bringing the Georgia Dream Program to Newton County, so that our residents can have resources to purchase homes. So that's gonna happen on August 24th. Also, I want to thank Cynthia Butler for accepting the role of Animal Services. She was under the consent agenda, but she wasn't acknowledged, but I want to make sure I acknowledge her for accepting that role as well. So that is all of my time for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've got six months more on this Board of Commissioners, and, and let's just say it's been a, it's been an interesting ride. But I appreciate all the relationships that have been built over, over this time. But one thing I'm, I'm very proud of, Mr. Johnson alluded to Spring Hill Park, and that was a community effort. I guess I kind of facilitated it and everything, but it's the community that came together and put that park together. All we did was build what they wanted. And I hope, before I'm out of here, that we get Cousins School started. J.C. and I, it's funny how the district lines go, the district line split the school. So he's got half the school, and I got the other half. So we're working together on that. Hopefully, before I'm out of here at the end of the year, we get some substantial progress made on Cousins School. I think we both got the vision of seeing something historical there for that area, and commemorating the first black high school that was in Newton County. And that, to me, is just a, is just a tremendous milestone that the county had back then. I'm a lover of history. It's good and it's bad. But I've been proud to work with J.C. and some of the other men and ladies that have been part of Cousins School out there. And I do hope we get that done before then, get something done before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. You know, I, I've been very blessed over the years I served on this board. And I've been blessed in seeing a, a community centers go up from the renovation, from the renovation of, of Washington Street. I did a little small portion of that to our real cousins, I think Ronnie and I, and Commissioner Sanders, store, we, we saved the, the splash committee had took all the money off, and we put money back in, and then the other, the whole board chimed in. And we set aside eight million dollars to renovate our real cousins' school, and so that was something big. Ronnie and I liked it so much, they went over, we looked at it, and said, save this part, we want to save this part, because it looked good. And that was, what we really wanted to do was not to forget where we came from. Commissioner Cowan went to this school, not as a high school, but he went to that school. And I know I did, not as a high school, but I went to the school, and I have a lot of good memories. But I am so proud of the Spring Hill Park, I think Commissioner Cowan, when he was the district, I came to the meeting, I said, no, we got to put a community center there. And we finally got something good. We worked together, the county pulled in, channeled with us, and we got something really good for the Spring Hill community. I'm very proud of it. And eventually ended up on my watch. But lastly, we got a, we got a new park that's coming town, that's also is in District 4. It's the park over at Turner Lake. And it's about nineteen million, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Cowan, nineteen million. It's a water park, and it's gonna be very beautiful. In fact, between Commissioner Cowan and me talking to Frank Turner Jr., they donated additional, additional, what, six acres to that particular park. So we got a lot of exciting and good things that are happening in our community. And lastly, I said I wasn't gonna church on this, but- And then lastly, I said I wasn't gonna church on this, but I think eventually the governor of the state of Georgia will, will look at what's going on in our county that we all love and he'll make a decision as to what he might want to do. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Um, we do recognize all the pointies, Ms. Butler. Would you please stand, I didn't see you out there. Uh, but thank you for your willingness to serve, uh, and we greatly appreciate you for your service. Thank you, ma'am. With that being said, we do have an executive session tonight. Oh, oh, my bad. Uh, Commissioner Mason, I need to give you your four minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess there was a hint, he ready to go.
Nah. You got four minutes, sir. Go ahead.
I won't even take four minutes. Um, I just wanted to make a brief announcement. Um, on, uh, Friday, July the nineteenth, uh, in District Two, we're gonna be having our back-to-school movie in the park. We are excited about it, so we want to invite, uh, everybody in the county to come out. Uh, we're gonna have movie, family, food, fun, uh, and just have an overall good time. I, I think, uh, with a lot of the things that our county has been experiencing, I think this is an opportunity, uh, for us to kind of just let our head down, breathe, uh, relax, um, enjoy each other as a community, laugh, have a great time. Uh, and so I want to invite everybody out on Friday, July the nineteenth, we'll be out there from six o'clock. Uh, the movie will start at dusk, so once it starts getting dark, um, the movie will begin. So come out, have a great time. This is, um, my last movie of the summer. Uh, we did, um, Cinco de Mayo in May, uh, then we did Juneteenth in June and then we'll be doing back-to-school, uh, movie in the park this July, so come on out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. My apologies. Again, we do, there's a need for an executive session tonight, potential litigation. Uh, I seek a motion that we move into executive session, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner, potential litigation. Uh-huh. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Stand in executive session.